Page lower parts says response from inspector. His response to me was there's absolutely no limit to how many toys one can own. Toys, bikes, scooters, wagons, skateboards, balls, along with other toys, objects left in the yard for days will be considered junk or debris. I responded letting them know that first of all, I have split custody with my stepchildren. They are with me for a week at a time and their father, obviously, and they're riding bikes every single day almost. And then they're with their mom for a week and then they don't touch those bikes for a whole week. And that's days where my kids' toys don't move and I don't consider them junk when that happens. And then I also had questions. I had to actually reach out to City Hall to even get these photographs. They were not provided to me with my violations. I had to reach out, like I said, five or six phone calls. And when I said, why are we as the owners not provided with these pictures? The response I have in this email from him is I have pictures of the violations and I do share them with the city, but I do allow the property owners time to correct the situation. I don't provide a phone number on the notices for both safety reasons and have documentation of the conversations, which is really great. But with that being said, if the problem is an excessive amount of toys in the yard, and then when I say what's the proper amount of toys, your response is there's no limit, that doesn't make sense to me. And then as for the thing with safety, after I got my second email, and you can see this on the third page and next, I let them know I'm going to the city council meeting, I'm going to complain about your services. You've never emailed me back with these questions I have about why should they move every few days? What is the specific code? The inspector showed up at my house the next day unannounced and uninvited. And I just happened to be walking out the front door and when I walked out there, I was on the phone and I hung up and he said, excuse me, and he says, I am, I believe Jason, that's the city code, and apparently you're going to go to City Hall to complain about me. And I said, oh, yes, I certainly am. And he said, well, I can show you what you're doing wrong. Took me over to the toys and said, this, this won't fly. The city of Stewart is paying me to clean this up. And I said, what's the exact code? There was no response at all. I don't understand how he doesn't feel safe enough to provide me with a phone number, but I should feel safe with someone showing up unexpect and uninvited on my property to point out what I'm doing wrong. To me, that's borderline on harassing, especially when I told you in the email that I've reached out. They said, don't inspect my property again, and then you show up to tell me what I'm doing wrong. So all of that has just been entirely frustrating to me. And what I understand here, there is no code about toys, correct?
I can see your frustration.
Yeah, and as it goes for the inspector, Jason showing up to your house, his son is our co-inspector and his son was not able to make it out for your inspection date. And so he asked Jason to stop by, so Jason was doing a reinspection. That's what I-
That wasn't the date of the reinspection? The date of the reinspection was August 6th?
I'm just saying, I know that they just stopped. And, and he said that you made some comments and then-
Oh, I told him I was going to talk to the news because he had never heard it.
And he promised that you-
To return any of my emails after the initial one where he said toys that must move.
But we, we asked that City Hall's number be put on there so that way they're not contacted. City Hall-
But City Hall had no answers for me when I contacted them. I spent 28 minutes of my time with City Hall inquiring, what's the code?
And that's what I'm giving it initially.
And they, they didn't know because there is not a code. So that, I mean, to provide City Hall's number when they're like, we have no idea what's going on, make it, I'm gonna be sorry. That's frustrating to me.
The toys, I think we've talked about this time and time again, the toys have got, we've, we've said that the toys have got to stop because we know we can enforce them. But I think the bigger issue with your property in particular was the weeds, the cars not moving, the grass getting tall, there was a chair. Uh, Jason said something to me today about a chair that you have spray painted a board on that says, slow down.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's because people speed by our household, my kids are on the trampoline.
He said the weeds were, the weeds were completely up around it and-
You can, yeah, you can certainly go and check it out. What you're gonna see now is the ash tree swinger took down today.
And there's a picture of the slow sign, there's no weeds around it.
Yeah, no, there's no weeds around it. That was the, actually, I would take a peek now because there are no weeds around it and this is the-
No, I, I've been by this house quite a few times, we drive around a lot. And I think through the process, it's made some quite huge improvements and I mean, I think it looks nice.
You made a lot of improvements before Channel Late News showed up.
No, the picture that was posted online was from October 5th. If you're referring to the one that someone posted and said this is what their house looks like, that was actually on October 5th when Google Maps drove by. And also with that being said, I can clearly remember my kids playing with those toys and laughing so hard as they built that castle and knocked them down. And if toys aren't the issue, and that was the issue then, it's still not an issue.
But did what, did you take care of weeds?
Yeah, there was a pile of weeds up front, yes. And if you look at it, it's pretty small in fact, too. And that was handled. My problem isn't the fact that I've been complaining about what I've cited for that I should have been cited for. That's not why I'm here. I'm here because of being cited for codes that don't exist. I'm here because I'm being harassed by someone showing up. And with that, he showed up on the 28th. So there's no reason for him to be there. The reinspection date was August 2nd. And I was clearly said in that email also that they were not to show up because I was coming to the City Hall council meeting. So for them to show up on the 28th to reinspect me, that makes absolutely no sense, especially when I said in my email to them, I will consider you trespassing if you come anywhere near my children's toys, which I did.
But we hired this company and they have every right to go around and inspect people's property. I don't know where they're going.
On probably the reinspection date, not to show up on my porch to tell me what I'm doing wrong when there is nothing wrong with my toys.
And then can they go on your property without your permission? Please can't even do that unless there's a crime being committed. Can they just walk on your front porch like it?
I don't believe so.
No, they can't.
That is kind of suspicious on the road.
I don't know what they do, aren't they taking pictures from the road?
He knocked on my front door to tell me what I was doing wrong on July 28th.
And did you ask him to leave your property?
No, I asked him if the city knew he was here and he says, it's a public thoroughfare. And I said, okay. And I called the city and I said, I do not want that man-
I think people have the right to sort of walk up and knock on your door.
Yep.
And then at that point, if you don't want him there, you can ask him to leave. Then we have a problem.
Go ahead.
I asked him the day before not to be anywhere near my property. So why he would feel the need to show up on the 28th to explain anything to me when I said, I look forward to talking to you at the city council meeting August 8th. And you have all the emails right there where I clearly said, do not reinspect my property. City Hall said, don't. And that came from meetings, said, just tell them, don't come to your property until after the city hall meeting.
Do we need to get Jason on the phone?
And Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, let me see.
And other council people, I just, I just wanna kind of throw this in. We had that situation here earlier this year where another resident got a letter about junk and stuff and it came out there as toys and stuff. And, and I thought we had discussed it, we had got it cleared up, that, you know, you just leave the toys out of it. But evidently, that's not true. A bigger picture too is I've had several people asking me, how many toys can I have in my yard, Mike? And I'm like, I, I don't know. I don't, I don't know what the issue is with our current inspector on, on the toys. I don't know what the fascination is. Other, other property issues other than that, yes, if you're gonna get cited, like she said, she can, she can understand that. Showing up prior to a reinspection date seems, I don't know, a little overboard to me to do. If you're gonna give them time, if you give them a certain time to do it by and you show up prior to that, I mean, come on. I mean, if, if this is, if, I don't know who's in charge of, of this because they are third party. Somebody's gotta like take the reins here and, and, and do something. It just can't be, well, we'll, we'll talk to them and then this is gonna happen again in three months. What? You know, but when I got people asking, well, how many toys are we gonna have? Are we gonna be like that, that Rudolph movie where nobody can have toys in town, you know? What's going on? You know, I don't wanna be that city.
No, that's what, yeah, exactly, that's why they're off limits.
And we have talked with Max and Jason on this. They need to fulfill that promise to leave toys alone. But I can testify, there was toys all over this yard when the TV news was there.
There ain't a lot.
Is that a problem? Nice, no, there was nice, neat, like, oh no, there's no problem with the toys. But they're gonna have to leave the toys and-
But you just said there's not a problem with the toys. So what's the problem?
Yeah, well, that's what I said, we're gonna talk to them. But that isn't the only issue, the grass, the weeds, the brush.
Look at these photos, the grass, the, the brushes is taking care of, drive by. As for the lawn, the lawn's not long in this picture. You can take a peek at it, it's not. And as for the bench, my kids eat popsicles while they jump on the trampoline.
Won't take that chair down if you put a speed up or a stop sign at intersection.
Yeah, no, people just blow by that, where I live over by-
It's a four-way stop.
Is it Fifth and Sherman? Yeah, there's nothing there, it won't do it.
Intersection, there's not one little sign, there's not even a deal sign. We see a wreck about every day at that intersection.
And about the day my kids stop and join popsicles while they take turns jumping on the trampoline, it's the day I'll live it.
I think we all agree about this point, is there anything else?
There's really not. Um, honestly, I would also, like I said, I am very upset with the fact that that inspector deemed to show up to my property on the 28th. And I clearly said I did not want him there until after the meeting. There was no call for reinspection and it borderlines on harassing.
And I told her trespassing, but she didn't call cops, like, cause that is, we totally not to come and eat cake.
And as for reaching out to the news, I spent 28 minutes of my own time on the phone trying to get answers from City Hall, City Council, from anyone before I ever reached out. And the only reason I reached out is because that man dared to step, trip, step on my property and point out, this is what you're doing wrong. This won't fly. I don't think anyone here would be okay with someone stepping onto their property and going, this, this won't fly. That's demeaning and it's insulting, especially when there is no code and I clearly asked for the code. So other than that, I would just say, have a talk with your inspector.
That's true.
Yes, thank you, thank you.
Thanks for coming up here.
No, I appreciate it, guys.
I apologize that the toys weren't on there because they weren't the same.
That, no, and that's, I-
And like, like Mike said, we, we've, we've had this little before, but we will reiterate that out.
Well, thank you because it, it's not fair for him to not provide a number for safety and then to show up. I don't feel safe with a man I've never met standing on my porch telling me what doesn't fly.
Sure.
That's just not how-
Like you said, the ones that, that weren't- Perfect, that take care of it.
Yes, those are handled.
15, debt obligation, fund agreement. This time, I was in a public hearing, if you received that. The name of the public? Close public hearing. B, resolution number 2229C. Principal, $400,000, chips to the top.
So this is the financial land acquisition alone. We'll have a requested separate action later on the infrastructure costs. Now, just putting your location, just overall project timeline. It's, it's, no actions requested on the timeline, it's just provided for reference purposes. But the, the key, kind of the key date driver behind the requested special meeting for next week, the land acquisition is planned to close from McAllen on September 15th. And then you'll note in the first section in that table, the city is financing is proposed to close on August 3rd. Lowing plenty of time, two weeks there for the funds to be in place when land purchase takes place. So the, the second section includes the timeline for the urban renewal plan amendment, the key dates and so forth. You have that in different versions in your accounts packet. Forrest has the engineering and design underway. Or late 2022, early 2023 timeline for the, the construction bits. And then the, kind of the financing elements for both the land and the public infrastructure are in the right section, the fourth section. So that's just for reference purposes. Is that, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chip. Andrew, back.
Andrew, back.
Calva.
I was expecting it.
Patrick, Patrick?
Yes.
Doley?
Yes.
Morgan? Calva?
Yes.
Randwell?
Yes.
16, 17 are done. 18. Right, so 245,000 dollars, yeah, okay. Chip again.
The, the rate is really good, three and a half percent. It's only a quarter of a percent spread over the 12-month, kind of the comparable US Treasury. So for a state bank, give the city an excellent rate. So looks good to me and would recommend, cool, thank you.
We can make sure on motion to A and B.
Come on. Randwell? Calva? How do you go? Patrick?
Yes.
Doley?
Yes.
Morgan? Calva?
Yes.
Randwell?
Yes.
Okay, 19. Urban renewal plan amendment. September 12th?
Yes. We need a motion to A.
Move that.
Second?
Okay, move a Calva, second by Randwell. How do you go? Patrick?
Yes.
Doley?
Yes.
Morgan? Calva?
Yes.
Randwell?
Yes.
Okay.
B is-
Setting a day two.
That's who, and the-
Is that B?
Yes. So. Next time, next week, too. I guess.
We can move forward with the tip agreement, we don't wanna hold that up, I mean, we're gonna, well, I mean-
It won't be free next week.
No, I mean, this tip agreement is just setting a hearing, isn't it?
Yes.
Yes.
Just for the tip agreement, so we can set that.
You can set it. Okay, we need a motion.
So moved.
Go ahead and say it.
Second by who? Okay. How do you go? Patrick?
Yes.
Doley?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Calva?
Yes.
And so?
Yes.
C, 2227C, so again, setting a date.
So moved.
Randwell? Second by Morgan, how do you go?
Patrick? Yes.
Doley?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Calva?
Yes.
Randwell?
Yes.
Public forum?
Yeah, kind of, two things.
Okay.
Okay, so first, uh, this training that we have was good. I thoroughly enjoyed it, it was very informational. Marquina gave us this, this thing that's in your packages for information purposes. Ash, is there any way, she mentioned some closed session training, just some training on just going through with us different types of closed sessions, when we need to go into a closed session and things of that sort. I'm curious to see if the council would be interested in maybe adding that training, just information. I mean, she was very informational, she knew what she was talking about. I just think it would be beneficial for all of us to have that training, if you could reach out to her.
True.
Christina, just on that, she said she was gonna share that packet that she had the binder with the city.
Yeah, I don't know.
If that wasn't done, I would suggest you follow up and share that with the council.
Yeah, I have that binder in my car.
It was good information.
It'd be very informational.
If you have it electronically, it's all available.
I can make it electronic real quick.
Well-
She also gave us a flash screen.
Did she? Yeah.
Okay, that's what I was asking about. I, I would suggest sharing that with, with all the council.
It was great information for that meeting, but the closed session meeting or training might be helpful, just, I don't know. Second of all, I received a couple of phone calls and apparently the Board of Adjustment has approved a special use permit for a welding, a mobile welding, something or another. I don't know the particulars of it, I have a copy of the minutes if anybody wants to see it. In talking with Jason Van Osgood, it sounds like they didn't have jurisdiction to go over that and there's several huge red flags with the building, the fact, I don't, I, I didn't go into particulars. It's really not for me to, I just think it would be helpful if we had maybe our city attorney look it over to make sure, because he said this is why cities sue Board of Adjustments a lot of the times, because they overstepped. It's not allowed, we're breaking zoning, you're setting a precedent that you're not supposed to be. I would just like if maybe Jason and our attorney can get on the same page, because this is something Jason didn't even know about.
Yeah, I would like to see it because it's truly an residential area.
I don't know, I'm, I, like I said, I'm staying out of it. I would just like our city attorney to address it and kind of give us some guidance on it because I would hate for something to happen and then set precedents for everybody else.
Yes.
I don't know how other people feel about that.
Okay.
If that's an option, if you can give that to me.
Matt, yes, I think.
Hands up. Free to look around. Thank you. Homes by Johnson. He has filled out our first City of Stewart residential light housing rehabilitation tip program application. He's got a project at 409 with Harrison Street.
Harrison.
So those are some photos, just a heads up, gonna put this on the 15th agenda.
And is it known that we have building permit processes now? So any work done inside needs to have permits through Jason?
Yes.
Would I have a little bit?
Yeah, so it'd be a little bit. So, um, tentatively, at this point, projected, projected sale price upon its completion is around $255,000, $260,000. $255,000, $216,000. And he's done about $1.3 million of work in our balance. Yeah, so.
Just as long as we have all the certifications in the program like we've asked, those certificates by certified inspectors, I don't see an issue.
He's definitely reading the, yeah.
And the sewer, all that stuff, so.
Yeah, so he's aware of all that, he filled out the application himself, so. He may actually qualify for this. It does bring out, uh, it does increase the property tax on that property pretty significantly.
And it's a house that sat there for, I don't even know how many years, not lived in.
Okay, that's all I have.
Warren?
Don't indulge me for a few seconds.
Fine, we gotta till 10 o'clock, actually.
Oh, oh, whoa. Couple of things I want to bring to the councils. I've been working with Matt and Forrest, as I think Matt mentioned to you, on getting a pedestrian bridge across the interstate. I used to live down the town and, and so my wife and I not frequently would pop up over the bridge and meet somebody who parked on one side of the interstate and walked to the other side. And there's like, I don't know, maybe 12 inches of concrete, you know? And you just, you meet somebody and it gives you a mini heart attack. You're just glad that there's not an uncommon semi that can go around the person. And we're working on updating our recreational trail system, so hopefully we can get some grant money through the trail program to help pay for that. DOT has been really great to work with. They've scheduled a lot of meetings, put a lot of manpower into advising us about which ways to go. And I think probably the route to go is, will propose amending the conference plan to include that trail system running through P and Z and then bring it to you guys. But just wanna give you a heads up, know what we're working on. I heard talking, some of you, about a client who's considering donating some land to the city for a city park. And obviously tying in these trails with that city park, I think, would add significantly to the quality of life in town. You know, that's, that's something that people moving to a community or people in a community rate very highly now, is having recreational opportunities. We, we got phase one done out here by the, the soccer fields and then it kind of stalled out. But I, I think this is gonna be the impetus to, to keep that moving forward and I'm really excited about it. And I expect you are too. The other thing I'm gonna add, and this is not directed at Andy Forrest, and I'm mentioning him by name because I'm not singling him out. But as Christina mentioned, the training here the other night that Cory and Christina both attended and a good part of the P and Z and Board of Adjustment attended was very good. I'm not sure if the lessons sunk in, but I, I, I heard a lot of statements here tonight that were not quite right. You do need to be concerned about spot zoning. The Board of Adjustment does not have carte blanche to grant a variance whenever they feel like it or a special use permit. They have to make specific findings, you know, that the business that they're renting a special use permit to is not gonna cause the problems that we have with zoning ordinance in place to address in the first place. You know, if you have a business that essentially has the same impact on a residential neighborhood, it's, it's me working from home because I have COVID, for instance. You know, somebody who has a home office, that's the kind of home business that should get a special use permit variance very easily. It's when they have, you know, customers coming and going or clients coming and going, that's gonna disrupt the residential character of a, a neighborhood that's been zone residential. You know, that's why we have these rules in the first place. So the Board of Adjustment really needs to be making, uh, findings of fact and, and their decisions, if they're wrong, have to go to district court to be appealed. So that's why, as Christina mentioned, you know, either a neighbor or other concerned citizen or the city itself has to sue in order to get that decision reversed. So you wanna make sure that, that the people who are on your Board of Adjustment take the job seriously and, and understand what their responsibilities are in terms of fulfilling those duties. You don't wanna be in a situation where people are moved by emotion or who they know or that kind of thing, rather than looking at the, what the rules are and has to come to the city council and change the rules. It isn't to, well, we'll just bend this rule because it's inconvenient for this particular person. You know, that undermines the, the whole rule and makes everybody mad because then the law's not being applied equally to everyone. So I spoke way too long on that, but I didn't wanna-
I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Get that contrast.
I, I appreciate that too, Warren, you know, that's, there's stuff that's in our code that's very specific on that. So I appreciate your comments.
Yeah, and I was, I, you know, I try not to take too many editorial comments, but I was shaking my head when, uh, you know, I think maybe too much, I'm not sure, but it said, well, we can give him more time. You, you really can't. I mean, if somebody sued you guys, you'd be completely exposed. You, you don't have the right to give him six, six more months, let alone five years. You know, if there had been an accident, the liability would be all on the city. And, you know, I had a brother-in-law that got out of auto body work because the chemicals you work with are really dangerous. You know, is that something that, you know, if I've got kids next door, I want next to me? So anyway, and I'm not picking on Andy, I love Andy, he's a great guy. So, anyway, I, and I'm not picking on Andy, I love Andy, he's a great guy.
We, uh, we acting as a deputy clerk and IT. I just want everybody to recognize that we have added. And she's been dropped, and we have added people to hire billing clerk, which is, is originally.
Who?
Billing clerk.
Who's our billing clerk?
I am.
Oh.
She is, but now she's acting the deputy clerk and we hired one to replace her. Hopefully we do something to reduce in the meantime, this week or next week. And then that position is paid sixty percent by the, thirty, forty percent by the city. That's how it was part of it years and years ago, and the benefit is paid by the city. So we'll give you more information at the next meeting, probably in September or so. I just want everybody to recognize how hard she's, our jobs that, that she's doing. And we're gonna continue keep Mike as a IT from outside, you know, he offered to help us as an IT. And I think talking to that at the utility side, he provided IT for what we have here as a city and utility system. We'll probably get a paid two hundred dollar a month just to retain them.
And that's about fifty, fifty?
Yes. So that's kind of, uh, how we're going about the IT, so Sarah doesn't have to get up fifteen times. Mike can come to me and help us fix the whole business.
You use Coon Valley, right, for your internet? Yes. Cause I would, if, if you run out of solutions here, I call them all the time, they've got good people over there, which they can help you out too.
So really more of a blessing than anything, but talk about the soccer complex, if we can get the bathrooms turned back on.
That's what it was online, but.
Okay, and also the lights, I know we talked about that, and I'm up there pretty much year round, but I know it's like none of the trash, we've been taking out all summer and stuff like that.
Laptop with baby on that.
And just looking at some of this coon enforcement, you know, I would argue the softball crow's nest is, it's broke in, the doors are kicked in, so.
Which one did they take down?
Is it?
One basically.
Well, they took one of them down at the baseball field, is that part of the softball field?
Robert Brady worked on that shit.
Okay, yeah.
And it's, that's the reason that it's down, I'll do tours now. But my daughter and some of the soccer people are gonna be coming to the meeting next month and talk about the lights that we took down from downtown to put them up and wipe it, oh, I have to talk with baby about.
The whole up there are public works or is it just a joint effort of public works?
Just gotta figure out where it wanted, just say, James says, I don't want here, 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 and then between utilities cities, they'll get them in. And the flagpole's laying down, that needs fixed up, we're done something that, that hopefully. Have been enough soccer complexes, yes, so many. And vegetable toilets and, yeah, it's a pain, I talked with Chief Rea, I don't know if his girlfriend'd be interested in cleaning them, but that's a big deal, we gotta find somebody to clean the rest of it. But we spent money to fix them up, we need.
Who cleans our restrooms at the park? Who cleans our restrooms at the park?
Bar boss does.
Would she be interested in adding that in, that's just a thing, but is there a point where we can have, um, Jim and, I mean, you do a lot of parks and rec, and somebody on the utilities come together and just get a plan in place to get it done, so to continue to talk about it?
Good idea.
Cause it just keeps going year on year.
Yeah, it seems like we keep talking about it, nothing's changing.
I mean, the, the lights are broke out there, but the poles are still, they're used to the.
Maybe if we could get Pat, Ali and Jim and James in one area and just start making a map. Then we can present it.
I got a question. Who's complying on NIMs here? I mean, you had your training years ago. But maybe Ash, if there could tell you where to go, there's a website, you do it online, but.
We just.
With the. If we're not complying, uh, duration will come. But you guys who aren't compliant, you know, go get the money, everybody needs to become compliant.
When you say everybody, it's city council?
All the city council manager, the fire, I believe, the police, so I'll have to find out who. Jason, maybe you could do some, somewhere when you do it, there should be a certification sent to the city.
Is that good forever?
Well, I've, I had mine years ago when they said it's good forever, I could, I could call Robert and ask him.
I don't think there's a limit on how long, but I would say after probably four or five years, so. So they changed that stuff here.
Okay, did we ask anything? Meeting.
One, one, one more really quick thing, before we go too far, once we, in just, just a request, once we get going on this phase four, can we start planning some joint meetings with utilities so that way we're all working together on how this is gonna work out? Are you okay with that, John?
Yes, well, we don't, we don't get any electric revenue out there, but I can tell you right now, that's gonna be a problem.
Why is that?
They're all electric.
And we can't change that?
The last, no, you, you'd have to give a section of your town two.
No, that doesn't even work, we've tried that, that didn't work.
No, you can't do it, the only one we have is the last phase.
If you want to argue that, go to the Iowa utility board and hire an attorney and get the.
I'll pass on that.
And Warren, one question after you, is there more lots available outside to build on in the housing, or you don't?
You know, I don't know, that'd be a good thing to find out.
If, if you put the pedestrian bridge, cause I had a person said, I don't want my kids going, you know, over the bridge, like you said, they're not gonna get a pedestrian bridge. And at one time, there's gonna be bigger lots, maybe somebody would be interested in building a three, four hundred thousand dollar house if they had all the land.
A couple of years ago, I spoke to somebody over there and there, there is some, plenty of lots available, but that was two years ago.
Yeah.
One thing I would like to. Be one of those lots as a park, like connection point for a trail or a barrier to states. The other thing I think you're gonna see, uh, thanks to Quickstar, I think we're gonna get an after gas, this house is a really big one. And that's really gonna make business and residential lots attract itself, you know, so I think it makes pop.
Anything else, anybody?
Next one.